Good evening, everyone. Tonight is May 24, 2023. It's 6:00 PM. I would like to call to order the City of Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item tonight will be a motion to approve the consent agenda. Would someone like to make the motion?
So this is Janet. I move to approve consent agenda items three through four. This is Sue. I'll second.
Any questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to speak at the public open Hearing none, we'll move on to the Planning Commission report. The liaison tonight is Janet Haglund, so she can begin.
As soon as I find my notes.
Find your notes.
I know they're in here somewhere. Here they are. Okay, so I am reporting on the Planning Commission meeting that was held on May 17, 2023. There was a discussion of the conditional use permit for the planned unit development, Columbus Industrial Park. This is low information on this development is located on pages 1 through 40 of our packet, if you want to refer to that. So there was, the discussion was started by an update from Dean Johnson, our planner. He discussed a letter that was received from Anoka County requiring that the applicant add a northbound turn lane to their plat. And the city and applicant wrote to the, or contacted Anoka County and asked them to reconsider this requirement due to the fact that it's a fairly small business with not a lot of anticipated traffic and no other business along that route is required to have both a right and left turn lane. At the time of the Planning Commission meeting, Anoka County was considering this or having internal discussions. I just asked Administrator, City Administrator Merco whether we'd heard anything. The city has not. Has the applicant heard anything from Anoka County? Oh, let's hear, let's hear what you learned. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Marcus Lee with Windsor Engineers in Minneapolis.
John Sawyer, Forhawk Lane in North Oaks, Minnesota.
Okay. Would you mind updating us with what Anoka County has said?
So I emailed Anoka County and they sent me an email back saying that they're not going to require a left turn lane, but they still want a bypass lane.
Okay. Was there, was there any other updates from them regarding your application that we should know about?
No, that's the only real plan change, other than we'll add some traffic control sheets to the plan as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And will that, will that be required in the first phase?
Yes.
The other thing that Dean Johnson brought up was a edit to condition number 11, which clarified what the process would be as businesses lease space in this development. And what they were requiring was, or what we were planning to do was to issue a letter of zoning compliance prior to any original occupancy or reuse of any building. And so that is now been incorporated into the conditions. And so with those changes, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for this CUP PUD, and now it's up to us to make it happen.
Would someone like to make the motion?
Sure, I will make the motion. I move to approve Columbus Business Park conditional use permit for the phased planned unit development subject to May 8 of 2023 Planner's Report Conditions 1 through 25 and dated April 5 of 2023 Engineers' Report Comments. And then add in the update to the traffic.
Number, oh.
Is it number?
Numbered or not?
Well, I think, I think the requirement just said, just referenced the requirements of Anoka County. So I think that we don't, as far as I know, we don't need to make any adjustment to the motion because that will be their requirements. Is that right, Elizabeth?
I think it will be included in the agreement that we put together, the overall agreement, that in fact it was to be required, to be built with the first phase and that the other requirement for the turn lane would not be required.
Right.
So you want that as part of the motion?
It will be, I don't think it has, Bill, I don't think it has to be part of the motion because I think it's going to be part of your agreement.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Councilmember Haglund is correct. Number six captures the essence of that, that Anoka County can have reasonable conditions of approval. As Administrator Merco said, we will have a development agreement in this case because we want all, anybody leasing under this conditional use permit to have a notice of the conditions. And by having that development agreement recorded against the property, the conditions run to them as well. So anybody who leases from the property should be given a copy of the development agreement so they understand all of the conditions, in particular that there has to be this zoning compliance letter. And the zoning compliance letter, just for the record, was a, essentially a compromise to having multiple conditional use permits. We didn't want to end up with multiple conditional use permits on the property, add that administrative burden not only to the tenants but to the city. But in lieu of that, they have to understand that they can't do anything in that space until this compliance letter is had. So all of that gets in the development agreement, gets recorded against the property and provided to the tenants when they lease. If that makes sense.
And just one clarification and typo on my part. It's an industrial park, not a business park.
Thank you.
Do you need somebody to second it? I'll second that motion.
So it's moved and seconded. Are there any more questions or is there any more discussion?
I just have one question for Elizabeth. Is that also inclusive, the letter of occupancy being required for anyone who might sublease? I think we talked about that or that was talked about at the Planning Commission. So, so if they, I think we said we were going to require it for that too, but I just wanted to make sure that that got in there.
Mr. Mayor and Council, each last E would include sublasts.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We are happy, really happy to have you in our city.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Okay, you guys can be seated then. And then there were two public hearings being held at the 17th meeting. The first one was an ordinance amendment to 23-03, Chapter 7A Administrative Variances for Low Floor Elevation Regulations for pre-1990 dwellings. And this is in our packet on page 41 through 42. This was a request brought forth by Councilmember Wagaman to address a problem that's fairly common in our city, and that is for dwellings built prior to 1990. The rules were different about adding on and how far above modeled soil they needed to be. And so this variance, or this amendment grants an administrative variance, much like our septic system administrative variance is conducted, to allow staff to evaluate the, and the engineer to evaluate the building plans and grant a building permit administratively without having to go through public hearing and going through the Planning Commission. So we have, we need to make a motion to approve that ordinance change and...
Should I go first?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2303, Chapter 7A Administrative Variance for Low Floor Elevation Regulations as presented. Is there a second?
And this is Sue. I'll second.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
This is Rob. Just the only question. I tried to get on the Planning Commission meeting, but I couldn't get into it, so I wasn't able to listen. But with that, is, it's only pre-1990, so if somebody can't come in and say, hey, I want to build a house on a swamp, I'm going to bring a bunch of sand in. All right, I'm good with it then. So just wanted to verify.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And then the second public hearing was on ordinance 23-04, Chapter 7C, 7D, Wetland Zoning and Stormwater Management Regulations. This is a ordinance amendment that has been long in the making. It was initiated at first at the request of the Sunrise River WMO, where they had noted a couple of discrepancies between our city stormwater management plan and theirs. And as we started to discuss the remedy for those, for that conflict, we started to consider the fact that as we are part of three different water management organizations, we had three different sets of rules that, that were in place in our city and in some cases fairly different rules from one property to another that could just simply be across the street from one another. And so made the request to our city engineer to take a look at the three water management organization rules as it pertains to wetlands and stormwater management and to try to harmonize those across the city so that we would have one set of rules that we could hold developers accountable for rather than three different sets of rules. And that was a huge process. So I thank you so much for taking that on, Kevin and Tim Olson. And there was a really nice presentation by Tim at the Planning Commission that kind of went over at a high level what the changes were, and I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Kevin, or?
No, and I want to give Tim 99% of the credit on this because he did most of the work on it. So I'm filling in proxy for Tim. He said that there were a couple of questions in regards to definitions. One of them was in regards to the definition of an emergency overflow. And I don't have the total context, obviously, about the discussion was, but he's not recommending any changes in that definition. He's saying all flooding downstream should be considered impactful and should not be exclusive to land use or ownership. Identifying specific land uses can imply that only those uses are important, so.
I can, I can give you some context because I'm the one that brought it up. So the reason I, what I had suggested is perhaps adding flooding of residential property because I am aware of a case in Andover where the overflow outlet for a housing development is being directed to private property, a manicured back lawn of a friend of mine, actually. And as she has come before their council and Planning Commission and also the Coon Creek Watershed, they have stated that that's legal and they're not going to make the change. And I think that's obviously their call to make for their city, but I wouldn't want that happening here. And so that's why I wanted to have that called out. So I'm happy to hear your take on that or anybody else's, but that, I still feel like that would be a good clarification to have. Not that he's wrong, I just, you know, people change, councils change, everything. It just feels safer to me to have that called out, especially when you have a watershed district that's backing that, that kind of action up.
I think, I think one of the...
And can you first clarify which definition it was? Because you mentioned it in the meeting, but I can't remember which one it was.
It was emergency overflow.
Yep.
At U of...
It was...
Okay. E.
Yeah. So what I was suggesting is it said flooding and I said to residential properties was what my suggested edit was.
What, one of the issues there that I see, if you, if you limit, limit that oftentimes stormwater ponds are placed kind of in the backyards and then they're typically, or it's not common, but it does happen, whether that would happen in Columbus or not, it depends on the development style. But if you're surrounding a stormwater pond with residential properties, the only place that you can direct an emergency overflow is across somebody's property through typically what would be a drainage and utility easement. So maybe, maybe what the clarification should be is that an emergency overflow has to be directed to a drainage easement.
Or, or a ditch. I think in this case there was a ditch close by, but it was more expensive to point it in that direction. So I would be okay with that change.
Yeah, something that would, that would indicate we have the rights to direct, to direct the flow in that direction should, should flooding occur. Typically, if emergency overflow is overtopped, you're going to have a lot more water, you're going to have a lot of water everywhere. So, but I understand your point. And so if you'd allow us to kind of just make sure we kind of clarify that language correctly, I think you can pass, well, the other question was on the definition of excavation. And the question was whether that should also include fill? Do you want to provide a little context on that, Jesse?
Absolutely. So I also brought that one up. And the reason I brought it up is because we have a chapter in our ordinances that talks about mining and it has a definition of, well, actually it doesn't have a definition, but what I understood from talking to Elizabeth is a sort of generally accepted definition is excavation in that case means moving dirt around. So it could be bringing it in, it could be moving it out. And so I was concerned if we had a definition in this ordinance that was in conflict with that generally accepted definition of excavation, and that, and that was the point of bringing that, that question up.
Yeah, and excavation typically is defined as just the displacement or removal of material. It typically doesn't include fill. And in, in this particular section of definitions, there is a definition for land disturbing activities, and that covers kind of the other stuff, including fill. So I think to try to include fill as part of this definition may, may conflict with some of the usage in the ordinance itself. So we don't recommend that change, so.
Yeah, and I, I guess, I don't know how often that happens where one chapter defines something one way and another chapter defines it another, whether there's any problem with that or whether or not it should be called out that this definition is specific to a particular chapter.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if the, if the definition is within that chapter, it would pertain to that chapter. Other definitions, like in the zoning ordinance, pertain to the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So they don't necessarily create a conflict. So, you know, we can look at that with the engineer's office, but generally if you define it within a chapter, it doesn't cover the whole code.
Okay.
Unless it states that it's, you know, multiple sections.
All right.
So I would just say that, you know, if you want to approve the ordinance conditioned on, you know, we'll refine the definition of the emergency overflow and then review the excavation.
Well, what I was going to suggest is I have a Sunrise River WMO meeting coming up, and I have to be honest, I haven't had a chance to really look at this with super carefully, but I've told them that we wouldn't be getting back to this until, the council wouldn't be getting back to this until likely the 14th, because at the time I answered the question, we hadn't gotten Tim's revisions back. So I'd be perfectly fine with just tabling this until, and then that gives you time to make those changes and everybody time to look at it really carefully.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, when we look at those definitions, we want to make sure that it, that the protection isn't just to residential property, so we wouldn't want emergency overflow on, on other forms of property as well.
Yeah, I think, I think what I was trying to say, you're right, is it's just non-public lands.
Right. Thank you.
And I think I do have a couple of questions on this, if you're...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Go.
So Kevin, I, I did read through this whole thing and I have questions that probably isn't going to change any of the language. I mainly want to just get a better understanding of, you know, how this ordinance works because it is, you know, the city is responsible and it says that the city is responsible for the stormwater management plan, but it's really the expertise of the watershed that tells the city, you know, what the rules are and, and how the rules work and, and how to get good drainage because, you know, we don't really, we don't have that expertise. And I know that Tim went through a lot of time looking at the Rice Creek watershed rules and making sure that everything jived. So can you just explain like how the process works, like?
So typically if we get an application for any kind of development permit in the Rice Creek Watershed District, which is the primary coverage area of the city, we defer to Rice Creek. We don't do any stormwater permitting under our ordinance in Rice Creek and probably wouldn't either under Coon Creek. Really what this came about is because of a lack of clarity and conflict between what our ordinance was stated versus what the Rice Creek rules were. And so when we get into Sunrise, when we're required to evaluate the stormwater, we've got a different set of rules. So it was really, as Janet indicated, really to merge, merge the process together so we're consistent in application between Sunrise and the other two watershed districts. So, so really primarily this would only, we'd only probably implement this when we deal with permits in Sunrise.
Okay. And it does say so, and kind of tagging on to that, every time there's a building permit request, then they have to do a stormwater management plan.
Correct.
Which even in the case of the one that we had tonight, and I didn't see it in the original paperwork, and as I was reading through this ordinance, I'm like, oh, everybody has to have one. Okay, well, I wonder if there's one for, you know, this one, and I didn't see it, but now I do see it as I was looking through the new packet. So there is a stormwater management agreement and that spells out everything. So that answers that part. But in order for each development to have a plan, then it's because it is going to affect everything else in the city or how, making sure it doesn't impact other parts of the city. So is there a master plan for Columbus so we know what everybody's plan is and then as this person comes in and making sure they don't disrupt what that plan is? So my question is, is there a plan, like an overall plan for the whole city?
I'm not aware that there is one.
Okay. So I don't know how, how do we know how it impacts other parts if, if there's not a, if there's not a plan? I mean, it just seems kind of odd that there isn't a plan for the whole city.
Well, the intention, the intention of water rules in general, particularly in Minnesota, is very much implemented to preventing downstream impacts. I mean, there's, there's requirements for infiltration, there's requirements for stormwater retention. And so I think, you know, over the last, you know, probably through the course of my 35-plus years in this field, there have been a lot of rules that have been implemented primarily to address the issue of downstream impacts, you know, and then, and then we rolled on top of that. There's all the requirements for erosion control that have been implemented, both through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and, and the other watershed agencies that have jurisdictions. And so there's been a lot, a lot of work done to try to prevent damage and impacts downstream.
Okay, and that's really mainly the watershed district's responsibility is to make sure that the water flow through all of the areas is working correctly and not harming each other?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're relying heavily on, on those drainage systems that are, are part of those districts, you know? So if we want, and that was our emphasis at the Watershed District meeting is that we need these drainage ditches maintained and operating well because without them, that's, that's really our primary source of, of drainage in the community that we, that we put water to. But with that, we also need, you know, controls on those developments that follow the rules so that we're mitigating that runoff from newly paved surfaces and, and the like. So it's all got to work together, so.
Okay. I do have just a couple of questions specific to the ordinance. So on page three, under scope and effect, second paragraph in the red where it talks about the city shall comply with applicable jurisdictional regulations.
But can I ask what section you're going to make?
Sorry. Scope and effect, it's 7D 401. Second paragraph.
So it's like page 66 of our packet, right?
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yep, I'm on original page three, sorry. So it's 7D 401, Article four.
Oops, 65.
It's, it's of the, that's the Planning, that's the Planning Commission packet, but same one.
I'm on the wrong page, though.
Would you say what number, section what?
Section 7D 401. Did I say 301? I meant 401.
You said 401, but...
Okay.
The copy that I have, 7D 401, is called something different, so I'm wondering why that is.
There's lots of different...
Yeah, I have the orig, the one from a couple of meetings ago, and it might be the one that we had for our workshop.
Looks like it's redlined, so it would...
It is redlined, yep.
It would change the vagination.
Yeah, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at 7D 401 and I'm...
Here, do you want me to bring it over?
Yes.
So you have to look at the Planning Commission packet.
Yeah, in the back.
Okay, thank you. So you found the spot. So my question is, actually right after the red line where it says the city shall comply with applicable jurisdic... the city shall comply with applicable jurisdictional regulations and secure associated permitting, including but not limited to by Rice Creek watershed and Coon Creek watershed, but it does not list Sunrise. And maybe there's a reason for that, I don't know.
Say which, say the number again that you're on, I'm still lost. 7D, C?
Right here.
Do I not have the right?
Well, it's right here. Rice Creek watershed and Coon Creek.
Yeah, on three.
But it doesn't include Sunrise.
Because, I think it's because Sunrise doesn't permit, the city does.
Yeah, Sunrise has no permitting authority, only the city does.
So I think, I mean, I think that's correct, and that was what we were trying to, because the city was responsible for permitting for these things. But we didn't have, we didn't really have robust rules regarding it. And so, yeah, I think that's why Sunrise isn't listed.
Yeah, because we're the permitting agency in Sunrise.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, one more, that's all. And so the next section, which is section, well, it actually says, it's kind of goofy. The next page, actually, mine says, looks like Article seven, so I don't know how it got all the way to approval standards. Section 7D 701.
I'm on page four.
Did you find that spot?
Yeah.
So it says, no stormwater management plan which fails to meet the standards contained in this section shall be approved by the city council. So in this section, does it mean just 7D 701? Or does it mean 702, 703, 704, 5, 6 in that? Because there's really nothing in just that section, if that's.
I'm going to look at Bill for this.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, typically, when you reference a section, it's the entire section. When you get into, I'd have to look at it myself.
Okay.
I don't have a copy, so I'm going to.
So this just, it says in this section, see how there's. That's a short section.
Yeah, it would be the entire section. Yes, Article seven would be all of the section numbers.
Okay. All right, that answers that one. Let me just look, I might have just one more, a quick one, but. I think it was in the table. Oh, yeah. So all the way back to table, it was table C6, I think. Oh, table, yeah, table C6 is the low floor and low entry freeboard requirements. But going all the way through, because it starts with, I mean, mine starts with number seven, but then it goes, G is easements, H is requirement exhibits, I is exceptions, J is extended permit. Oh, maybe I guess, I think I'm, sorry, I'm getting to it, but it's under a different section. So I don't know if it's part of that table or not. 7D 709, wetland alterations. B, policy.
Hold on, 7D 709.
Yep. Section B, policy. It says it is the policy of the city of Columbus to maintain no net loss in quality, quantity, quality, and biological diversity. And then also, it's our policy to increase quantity, quality, and biological diversity of Minnesota's wetlands by restoring and enhancing diminished or drained wetlands. I guess I was just, do you have any background on that? Like, how would we increase or decrease? I mean, if it's our goal to increase.
I'm not able to comment on that right now.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't know if that's language that was there.
I think it was, because it's black, so it must have been there before. That was all I had.
Well, so it's a good thing we're going to give a few more weeks to consider this.
Yeah. I am just, I am curious about that, though, because I don't know how, if we don't have an overall plan for wetland or for stormwater. And maybe that's the difference, maybe stormwater and wetland stuff, I know that's two separate things.
It really is, stormwater and the wetlands, I mean, it's.
But they touch each other.
Yeah, I mean, typically with stormwater, we're talking about management of runoff. That's kind of the primary thing we're looking at, whereas wetlands is, you know, something that's typically existing, and we know that we have quite a few of them here in Columbus. And so, you know, we're required to preserve those, and if they're disturbed or filled, they're mitigated. So there's a lot of regulations in regards to wetlands.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate your time on that.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and I'm glad Councilmember Wagman brought up that reference, because I think it can be clear, it could say something like this, Article seven, or. So I want to go through, this will give us an opportunity to go through all of those kind of cross-references to make sure they're clear as they can be. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion to pull, to carry this over to the 14th?
I think you would just continue it to the, to June 14th city council meeting.
No motion is necessary.
Okay, so that concludes my report on the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to number seven, the 2024 Anoka County Recycling Grant, pages 43 to 57.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, you received a memo from Lori Spangler, the deputy clerk who is in charge of the recycling. And each year, we have an opportunity through Anoka County to have input for an Anoka County municipal waste abatement grant. And this grant is, we awarded X amount of dollars to choose different activities, to do recycling activities throughout the year. The amount of wage reimbursement is capped at a certain amount, depending on what your allocation and population is. But we do have the opportunity to choose activities in different, in the different areas. So Lori has identified the areas within this grant that she feels money can be spent in. But in the memo, she's asked for any input, if you think there's other activities you would like her to explore or include. She's happy to do that. And the deadline, they give us a very short deadline this year. In order to get the application back, I believe it's June 6th, is when she has to get the materials in, and then the actual grant is allocated. September, it becomes final, and then you get the money in 2024.
And I just have one question on that, is, and I remember when we did this last year, do we automatically get whatever she applies for, or we typically do?
Yes, basically, yes. As long as you apply the money towards the appropriate allocations in each category, you basically get the dollars, and, because they're allocated to each community throughout Anoka County.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth, are we, this is Janet. So I get the impression that our recycling events are really well-attended. Do you think that, is there an opportunity to add, like a recycling event, like a drop-off recycling event, just to give people another opportunity to do that? Or is that not feasible for us?
You know, I asked Lori, because there are two drop-off opportunities and one pickup opportunity. But I did ask her for a fourth one, because you are right, they're very well-attended. I think people appreciate different times a year having that opportunity. I did ask her to explore working with, and I know that SRF was brought out in Wyoming, but maybe having a Columbus week where you can have, you can bring your stuff up to their facility and maybe get a discount, or maybe we would supplement using our recycle money, just to have another opportunity where you could bring things there, because there you can bring, you have the ability to bring junk, but not necessarily get, I mean, this is a recycling event. But again, I think what she was happening, at least the last Saturday, people were bringing junk. And we really didn't have facilities for junk. We only had accommodations for recycling. So I do think that there are property owners that are missing that component, meaning they don't have another opportunity to get rid of their junk. So the only way to do that is to partner with someone who accepts not only recycling, but also the junk, and you can bring it all together. And so that was the opportunity I was thinking of. But we can certainly look at something here at, you know, I mean, our facility.
I mean, I know this year, the curbside is being extended for an entire week, which is great. So I hope we can continue to do that if the person, the hauler that's providing that is willing, because I think that that's really, really nice. But, you know, I've driven by here, and there's a long line of people waiting to put their stuff. So I'm just thinking, maybe if we had three dates, the lines might be a little less. So I like your idea, too, though, I mean, if we could do both things, that would be fantastic.
I got a question, Elizabeth. Forest Lake had, or Washington County had a recycling deal here about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and I went over to it. And I was talking to them over there, and they take it, I kind of thought maybe it was just for Washington County residents, but they said anybody from the state can come in. I know, because I said, I'm from Anoka County, and they said, that's okay, you know. And it was a pretty big operation. And I just wonder if Lori could look into what that was, because it was advertised there, but when I talked to the gal, when, all they asked was my zip code, they didn't ask for my driver's license and just what area you live in. And I said, well, you know, not that I was trying.
They don't have a compliance officer, do they?
Well, I was kind of sneaking around there, you know, touching, make sure I didn't violate the law. And she said, no, we'll take anybody from anywhere in the state. So I don't know, but they were all Washington County. They had about four or five semis and forklifts, and taking paint, TVs, electronics.
Well, so they were even doing hazardous waste, that was a pretty big event then.
Yeah, I'd say I've attended that before and dropped stuff off. That same, that same one you're talking about, in years past, I've attended that and dropped stuff off as well, computers, screens.
And they have a lot, it went.
It didn't cost anything.
No, it didn't cost nothing. And it, I bet, I don't know, they had cars that went past the YMCA, but that went on all day, from whatever, it started at eight to two o'clock.
I'll have her call, I am not sure what kind of event that was, but somehow they got funding for it.
Well, I just was kind of stunned, you know. Whenever you can find a place to dump something, kind of legally, I went over there. And that brings up another thing, I'm looking at page 49, where they talk about yard waste and tree waste. Do we have one of those in Anoka County?
We do, there's a couple of compost sites. One is at Morgo, and one is at Bunker, I think. Bunker Hills has a compost site, and there might be one other one.
So do we have any agreement with Washington County, then?
We do not.
Because my driver's license says Forest Lake on it, so.
So around that same thing, I've dropped stuff off there as well.
Yeah, and they don't.
They look at your ID and.
They just, you know, just put this here, put that there. And that's where CST was grinding up all that stuff over there, but now they're not doing it. But they got the one on County, County Road 4 down there. They got another one down there. So I just, Bunker Hills is just so far to go.
Well, Morgo's not, though, Morgo's just right as you're going into Centerville, off of Main Street. It's off of Main Street, right after you cross the freeway on the, I don't know what direction, it's on the right-hand side, heading into Centerville.
Is that for Peltier, or Lake Peltier?
It's before, yep.
No, 14, like you're going to Centerville, just out of.
Okay.
Right after you go over the freeway, it's on the right.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to approve the Anoka County Municipal Waste Abatement Grant as presented, and we'll direct Lori to.
With the suggested changes that we had?
Lori can look into the, into the changes we've discussed. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Ron.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jessie, aye. On to number eight. We're looking for preliminary approval through the issuance of the revenue bonds. It's on page 58 through 63. We discussed this at our workshop pretty thoroughly.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, you have Julie Eddington on Zoom.
Welcome to the meeting. I can barely see you from here. Anyway, go ahead, thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Oh, thank you, I think someone's fixed this, okay. Thank you so much for having me. I was at the work session a couple of weeks ago, and we talked a little bit about this. What's happening is Dakota County CDA, which is the entity that handles all the housing allocation in Dakota County, has run out of allocation. And they came to me and asked if I could find somebody who would be willing to issue bonds for a project in Dakota County. And I met with the council during their work session, and you preliminarily agreed to do this. The resolution that we're looking at today would allow me as the bond counsel to go to Minnesota Management and Budget and obtain housing allocation from Minnesota Management and Budget. There's approximately, I believe, about $100,000 in housing allocation available, but there's a lot of people going in for allocation, so we don't know for sure if we will get it yet. But we'll need to do a process of getting forms filled out by the borrower, and then submitting those to Minnesota Management and Budget. And then we will also need to have the developer provide a fee for MMB, and then also a deposit to MMB. The project itself is in Rosemont, and it has 164 bedrooms, and it will be an affordable housing project. If there are any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is Bill Griffith. Julie, you said $100,000 in allocation, did you mean $100 million?
I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't be able to get much done for $100,000, right. It's about $100 million in, in allocation, I believe, which will be available.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, in the resolution, there is an exhibit. In Exhibit A, there is a public hearing notice. When I talked to Julie earlier today, the public hearing would take place sometime in August. So there are blanks in that exhibit, and that's because we don't have a date certain yet.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I had a question on it, if I could, Mayor. So do these, these funds that are being allocated, do they carry prevailing wage on that affordable housing project? So do these, these funds that are being allocated, do they carry prevailing wage on that affordable housing project?
The statutes don't require prevailing wage, but I suspect that because it's so hard to find people, enough people to do construction, that they may be paying pretty high wages, but I don't know that for a fact. But there is no prevailing wage requirement from the state or from any, from Dakota County.
Is there a way at all to add that? I'm just, I'm looking to avoid any kind of tax fraud or wage theft on, on any pertinent construction project that these state or local funds might be funding.
Sure. I mean, we can certainly add a clause to the bond documents that specifically say, I mean, we have a set sentence for our documents that says that the owner will ensure that there is no wage theft with respect to the construction. We could add that to the bond documents.
Yeah, that would be helpful at a minimum, I would say, yes.
Okay, I will make sure to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? So what will be the numbers, Elizabeth? Resolution number twenty-three.
This will be Resolution twenty-three zero six.
Thank you, Connor. So I'll make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-three zero six, providing preliminary approval to the issuance of revenue obligations under Minnesota State Statutes four, six, two, C and four, seven, four, A, as amended and taking, as amended and taking other actions in connection therewith. Is there a second?
Rob, I'll second.
Is there any other questions or discussions?
Can I just ask a question of Bill? Is it our place to put that kind of constraint on this bond?
Yes, you're the issuer. It's a reasonable request. I think what Julie is, I think, kind of the line that she is following is that she is going to incorporate no wage theft within the covenants of the bond documents. She's not mandating prevailing wage, as I understood her response. We are not mandating prevailing wage as part of this agreement. This, this resolution, is that right, Julie?
There's nothing in the resolution about that. That's correct.
So between now and the time that bond covenants would be drafted, I believe she's going to look at that, see how it would be appropriate within those documents and incorporate that to the extent she can. Is that right, Julie?
Correct.
And so those documents, we will have an opportunity to review those documents and see how that covenant is written.
Yeah, and this is Rob. My, my end goal there is just to make sure that workers aren't being taken advantage of on a project, whether they're immigrants or, or whatever it is because it's a pretty common trend in the construction industry right now where, you know, they'll subcontract down two, three times to an individual or from an individual subcontractor. And then when it gets to the fourth tier sub, they don't end up getting paid. And there's public dollars involved in these bonds and I just don't think that's fair to be spending our money that way. So that's, that's why I bring that up.
Anything else, anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye. Jessie, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Engineer report, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Just want to report again on our West Freeway Drive. We've got curb going in today. They didn't complete that work yet, so that work will continue tomorrow, but, but good progress is being made. Also, I know that Bill's going to be talking about the development agreement for the Three Beacon Holdings. They have started work out there and we are trying to get a pre-construction meeting scheduled, even though construction's already started. But we've got some things we need to talk about to make sure that we're all on page with the contractor and the developer as, as far as the work goes there, so.
Thank you. Attorneys report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the session ended, as you know, on Monday. Actually, a little earlier than usual. I guess that's when you don't have divided government. So the session ended. The good news is Columbus got transportation funding out of the session, so. Woo-hoo. In fact, the small cities assistance account was funded to just shy of twenty million dollars. The, the average per city was twenty-eight thousand. The smallest amount was ninety-six hundred. The largest amount was ninety-nine thousand four hundred and Columbus was one of those that received the largest amount based on the formula.
Yes.
So there were a handful of cities that were also in that position based on the formula. So that's good news. I am told, again, everybody kind of scatters at the end, but I am told that we have also a modest permanent source of that funding. I was going through a three-hundred-page bill today to identify that. And so what I will do, rather than just comment on the fly, is you'll have a memo. It'll be brief. It'll be at the next meeting. We'll have some more details for you. But it's my understanding, I was talking to our legislative team this afternoon, that there is a source of permanent funding. It was fairly modest. It came down, you know, as, as the conference committee negotiated that. But the main point is that there is permanent funding and we received, we will receive on a preliminary basis, this is a projection, okay? So they make a big point of that, that this is a projection, but we will receive the highest amount at ninety-nine four. So, and then we expect to receive successive years after that.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on that. Yes.
You're welcome. I met with one of the authors and they remembered meeting all of you and they said that kind of thing really is helpful, so. And to continue to bang the drum because the, the authors that have been working on this for years now, they've made progress this year, but they want to continue to tweak it because, you know, ninety-nine four is nice, but it doesn't fund a lot of roadway. So, you know, we'd like to be able to, to grow that over time.
Who did? Who was the author on that one, Bill?
Hornstein on the House, Senator Juzinski in the Senate. I can get you the full list. That'll be in the report that I, I prepare for the next meeting.
Thanks. I just want to make sure I reach out and thank them.
Right, absolutely. And even though Senator Juzinski was in the minority this year, he's been in the majority and has brought this forward every year for a number of years and it, and it passed this year. So they're, both Democrats and, and Republicans worked on this bill and are pleased with funding small cities and towns. Towns and small cities kind of have gotten the short end for a long time. Of course, I'll just say this, the larger cities manage to dip their, their dipper in the, in the pond as well, but that's all right, as long as we get, you know, funding as well. So pleased with that. Then, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'll just move on to Three Beacon Holdings. As the engineer indicated, grading work has started. We have a letter of credit that was submitted. I reviewed it, commented on the letter of credit. Elizabeth has the original. That amount is, I think, seven hundred and fifty thousand in round numbers and covers not only grading, but it covers mainly the construction of the public street. And it also includes stormwater and landscaping improvements. So that's our, that's our insurance that they will build as planned. The next item is, in the packet is the development agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's kind of our standard approach to memorializing conditions of approval. Also, when there, it's a little more substantial when there are public improvements being constructed, as there are in this case. It's important, of course, that they have that pre-con meeting. That'll be scheduled here shortly. And so I'll, two notes. The document is close to final. We ask that you approve non-substantive changes as well as replacing exhibits. So sometimes we find out there's tweaks that don't change the meaning of the, the document and we make those changes after tonight. In addition, some, but not all of the exhibits are final because they continue to provide construction drawings to our engineer and to our staff. So we just want to make sure that when it does go of record, we've got the final set of exhibits. Any questions with regard to the development agreement?
No, this, this is Rob. I'm wondering if we could go back to the previous portion with the, with the road construction. That's on, would be West Freeway Drive, correct? Going up to Lamprey Pass is what we're talking about there. So there was quite a stockpile of millings that was on the, over on the opposite side of the highway, on the east side of the highway. Was that all figured in in their original bid? I noticed they've been taking that and using it on this project. Was that just a storage thing for a future project or?
Yeah, that, that pile was intended to be used for future projects.
Okay, perfect. Someone had just asked me, so I wanted to make sure I could get back to them. Thank you.
So unless there's questions, Mr. Mayor, I think there's a motion in your agenda if you want to deal with these one at a time.
I'll make the motion to approve Three Beacon Holdings LLC Development Agreement, subject to non-substantive changes and updating exhibits to approved plans. Is there a second?
It's Rob's second.
Are there any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye. Jessie, aye.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the second document is a stormwater maintenance agreement. You'll be seeing more of these, I believe, as we have kind of perfected the, the requirements. We used to just have a paragraph in the development agreement. The problem with that approach is it doesn't stand out to subsequent owners as an obligation. And sometimes the develop, well, often now, the developers will ask us to re-lease the development agreement when they've complied with all of their obligations. And so now, in the last couple of developments, we're doing standalone stormwater maintenance agreements. We're making it clear that that run, that obligation runs to subsequent owners. And so in this case, you see that. You also, we also would note that the, the plat was originally intended to have an outlot. And one of the ways to address the fact that there wasn't an outlot is we will have a definite, we will have a description in the document that refers to the stormwater pond. So I think that was a good workaround. It's not, it's not absolutely required that we have an outlot for stormwater. And so we were able to solve, let's call it the developer's problem with this, this document as well. But you'll see more of these. I think we've, this is maybe our, what, Elizabeth, second or third document like this and we're kind of perfecting that approach and, and hoping that it, it stands out when people purchase property, that they know that they have that obligation to keep those stormwater maintenance obligations going.
So I'll make the motion to approve the Three Beacon Holdings LLC Stormwater Maintenance Agreement, subject to non-substantive changes. Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye. Jessie, aye.
Anything else?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Onto number eleven. City council members report. Ron.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Lucky me, I have a couple of things. First thing I want to just talk about is the Sunrise WMO JPA meeting that we are now scheduled. I think the last time I reported on this, we were in the process of scheduling this. It will be held on May thirtieth at nine-thirty at the Ham Lake City Hall. So if you guys aren't doing anything on that day, you can stop on by. It's a public meeting. So the purpose of this meeting is to try to bring to closure this updating of the joint powers agreement for the Sunrise WMO. I had a conference call, I guess it's a Zoom call. No, actually, it was a conference call. We didn't get to look at each other, with the attorney that serves the Sunrise WMO and the administrator to kind of plan out this meeting. So essentially, we are at a stalemate with the city of Ham Lake. All of the participants, with the exception of Ham Lake, have indicated a desire to dissolve the current JPA and reform under the new terms that were worked on for a year and a half and agreed to by the three Oregon, the three cities. The cities I'm talking about are Columbus, East Bethel and Linwood. Town of Linwood, not the city of Linwood. And actually, Ham Lake was okay with most of the amendments. There, as I've mentioned in the past, the two that they are not okay with is the funding formula and the requirement for unanimous ratification of the annual budget. Ham Lake had also indicated some months back that they intended to withdraw from the WMO, but not until November, which held up everything from a budgeting standpoint. So the hope is that we will get this resolved, one way or the other, after this meeting. I had sent an email to all of the, all four communities saying, if you have a new, a new compromise or anything other than what's already been discussed, send it now so that we have some time to talk about it. I also asked Bowser and Anoka County to do that. I've heard back from no one, so I'm assuming there's not going to be anything new on the table to discuss other than the dissolving and reforming of the, of the JPA. The attorney for the Sunrise is confident that we can do this in a way that will really create very little to no disruption in the operations where you can time the termination to coincide with the enactment of the new JPA. So stay tuned. It should be a fun, a fun meeting. Elizabeth, are you going to be there? Do you plan to attend? You don't want to miss this one, do you?
I'll check my calendar.
Was that tomorrow?
May thirtieth.
Next Tuesday, right? Next Tuesday?
Whatever day May thirtieth is. I don't know. I've lost track. Next week. I know it's next week.
That's Tuesday, yep.
Yep.
I'm busy, sorry.
It's okay. Don't worry, I'll come back and let you know what happened because whatever happens will require your approval anyway, so. Nothing, nothing, nothing will get, will get passed until all the cities, councils and boards approve it. So you will be hearing more. Any other questions on that topic? All right, then I'm going to move on to the Personnel Committee report. So that is in your additions to the packet on pages A-two to A-three. There's a couple of things. There's my report, or the committee's report, I should say. And then there's also a, the memo that we received from the League of Minnesota Cities and Elizabeth's memo regarding the summer hours. So I'll go through this fairly quickly because you have it all in writing. Just an update, no, no action necessary on the Code Compliance Inspector position. So we had a really qualified candidate apply for this position and then subsequently withdraw his application because he was running into some conflicts with rules that Para has for, for law enforcement officials that were no longer in law enforcement. He has subsequently decided that he can live with the rules and so he's asked to be reconsidered for the position and we're in the process of trying to schedule that, that interview. And then we thought it also prudent for us to address the parts of our job description that created some of those concerns for Para. And so we were going to make some small changes to that. Basically, it's, it's taking out things like in the, in the, not the requirement, not the minimum requirements, but the preferred requirements. I think we say a four-year degree in law enforcement. We'll just say a four-year degree. It's not going to say in law enforcement. And that will hopefully eliminate the concerns that were raised in this, in this candidate's situation. It will also, I think, pave the pathway for other candidates who may have been in law enforcement to also apply. So what we'll do is we'll update that, that job description and then repost it while we are interviewing this current candidate. So we should have an update for you soon on, on what's going on with this, with this position. Any questions on that one? Nope, okay. Nope, okay. The next topic is on summer hours, and so this is a policy question. We had this in place a few years back. I don't know exactly when it was. It was evidently before my time. But what summer hours is, is that the city hall closes early on Fridays between Memorial Day and Labor Day, and that gives employees an opportunity to have a little bit of a longer weekend or to miss a lot of the weekend traffic that they end up bucking when people are trying to get out of town for the weekend. What happens is that the employees adjust their schedules so that they get their hours in during the hours that the city hall is open. So, this is not paid time off. It's unpaid time off, but they, they don't compromise their FTE in order to do it. It's a good year to do this, besides just the obvious benefit of rewarding our staff for their hard work and doing things that improve retention of our staff. It's also a year that is not an election year, and that's going to be more challenging with the new rules that are being put, that were put in place in this last legislative session. Elizabeth can talk more about that. So, this is a, this is a good time to do this. My requested action is to recommend a motion that would designate summer hours for the time period from Memorial Day through Labor Day for this calendar year with the provisions that I stated already about, about not having to be paid time off. And I'm saying for this year only because we'll have to figure out if it's something we can carry on with the new rules about extended direct balloting and extended hours for elections and things like that. So. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll make that motion.
You go first. Well, I was just going to say, I, I love this idea, just because, you know, in today's marketplace, a lot of people are getting flexibility in their work schedules, being able to work from home two days, blah, blah, blah. And that's just not possible here with the types of jobs that they have. And the technology, they can't access some, a lot of the things from their home. So, this is one way, I think, that we can provide a little bit more flexibility and, and a reward system, too. I mean, I just think it's, it's a benefit, and I think it's a, I think it's a good thing.
And I hope we can figure out something going forward as well, but at least we'll get it in place for this year. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question. So, if, if they haven't met their hours, let's say by 1:00 on Friday, are they able to stay and work their hours to finish out their hours?
They would have to take paid time off, then.
Oh, okay. So, what kind of hours are we looking at having the staff work then to be able to cut out that early? They'll have to add three, four hours throughout the week on each day, or?
It depends on someone's schedule. I know that for some that work, you know, evening hours, they normally come in later. They just have to come in early or, or regular time to get their hours in. Others say they're just going to come in an hour early, and, and that works, and they think that's good, though. Miss traffic. So, I think everyone that I've talked to is really looking forward to it. And Jim said his department also is looking forward to it. So, we're, we're very excited, so much appreciated.
And then, just thank you. And then, just one more thing. What was the legislation that you spoke of, or?
So, there, and there was a fair amount of talk about elections, and in the new legislation, it indicates that direct balloting was seven days before Election Day. And now, it's 17 days before Election Day, so it's a much longer period that you can actually do direct balloting. But there's also required times, and I still have to read the details of the bill, but last time I read the bill, it indicated that we had to be open two Saturdays before the election, which originally was only one Saturday. We were open up from, from, I think it was 10 to 2, or might even have been 10 to 3, but now it's 9 to 3 that we have to be open on Saturday. So, they extended hours on Saturdays, and we have to be open from 8 to 4:30 during the entire
Yeah, that'd be a hardship, no?
elected time. And there was one other provision. I don't know if this prevailed. We had to be open one night a week from up till 8:00 at night. So, that's through the entire election. So, next year, for all of those who don't know, there are three elections. You have the presidential primary in March. You have the general primary in August. And then you have the, the general election in November. Well, in August, it's the second week in August. 46 days before the election, you have absentee balloting start. So, again, when you're, when you look at March 40, 46 days before, then you look at August, 46 days before, and then you look at September, there's a lot of elections, you know, I mean, action going on at each city in Anoka County. So, I realize that they passed a bill that, for additional funding, but it doesn't compensate for all the extra people that you need to actually make that work, especially if it's direct balloting. So, a lot, lots of different things going on for elections next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I would make the motion on behalf of the Personnel Committee to designate summer hours for the time period from Memorial Day through Labor Day for this calendar year with the provisions that we've discussed in this memo.
And this is Sue. I'll second.
Are there any other questions or discussion? I have a question. Elizabeth, when we did this before, how was it? Good?
You know, it was very successful. We didn't, you know, we accommodated, accommodated people for things that they needed, you know, I mean, on Fridays. And so, we really did not have any issues through that time. And again, with the limited amount of time, and we posted it, and we'll post it again, that, so I think it was very successful last time we did it.
And you would post the hours, the updated hours on the website, so everybody knows. Okay.
And on the sign out front.
Oh, and on the sign, okay.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
All right, then moving on to the next topic, Juneteenth. So, we talked about this, I think, in February, when it was originally discussed at the state level. They just updated the effective date, essentially, of this. So, originally, it was going to be made effective August 1st, so it was not going to affect this June. But in the nth hour, they squeaked it through that it was going to be effective for this June, and that was passed. And I believe if it is not signed by the governor, it will be signed by the governor. So, that means that we have another paid holiday to add to our schedule, and another day that the city hall will by law have to be closed, and not, no business being conducted. So, we would need to pass a motion to adopt this new holiday into our schedule of holidays and our published schedules, as well as to add this as a paid holiday to our benefit schedule.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And then, lastly, Elizabeth was contacted by Senator Kuhn's office about a college student who had been doing an internship with him and, or with his staff, and was coming to the end of it, and was interested in doing an internship with a municipality, and they reached out to us. The person's name is Grant Larson. He's a senior student majoring in political science and minoring in economics and business practice at Hamlin. He has a strong interest in learning about city government, comes highly recommended, and we can think of several projects that would be appropriate for an intern such as himself to work on. Elizabeth tells us that we have adequate funds in the budget to support the position. What we're asking for, the Personnel Committee is asking for, is because we are not scheduled to have another council meeting until June 14th, we're requesting that the council authorize the Personnel Committee to interview the candidate, draft the job description, and then upon agreement that the candidate is a good fit, offer the summer intern position with a salary commensurate with his education and expertise, and I think, or experience, I should say. And I think, because I know everybody will want to know, well, what's it going to cost us? We just said it wouldn't exceed a certain amount, because we aren't going to know what we're going to pay him until we interview him and, and determine what his experience and expertise is. So, I'm giving you a not-to-exceed value, and it's based on the worst or the best-case scenario, depending on your viewpoint. It's based on having, starting at the high end of our salary range for an intern, working 40 hours a week full-time, and working for 12 weeks without stopping. I don't think that's going to happen, but if it does, it would be $8,600.
If he's the candidate, he's only indicated that he only wants to work 20.
Yeah, so there you go. Cut it in half. So, I'm excited about this. I think that this is a great opportunity for us, especially getting someone who is very interested in city government and who's already been vetted by a state senator's office, so I think it'll be, it'll be a good thing for Columbus. Any questions?
I have a question. Should this be posted for the public?
It's a seasonal position, and internships usually aren't. I mean, if we had a, if we truly had an established internship program, you might, you know, post something like this, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's required when it's seasonal and not benefit-eligible and part-time and those kinds of things.
That's a question.
Yeah, good question. No, you can't come work for us as an intern.
No, I'm just thinking of somebody, I don't know, who would want to get into politics, but.
Great. All right, any other question? So then I would make the motion to authorize the Personnel Committee to interview this candidate, draft a job description, and upon agreement that the candidate is a good fit, offer the summer intern position with a salary commensurate with his education and experience. This is to include that the salary would not exceed a total of $8,600, and the position would be considered seasonal and not eligible for benefits.
So, Rob, I'll second the motion. Is there any other questions or discussion?
Who seconded it? I heard two. I heard stereo.
One of the two of us did at the same time, so go for it.
It's going to be Rob. Okay.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
That's it.
Jesse, aye.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Already? All right. Public Works.
No report, for myself.
Did I skip one?
Yeah, you.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you, you.
We're good.
Nothing for me. Nothing either. That's good, because I'm about to.
That's been like two or three in a row. What have you been doing, Jim?
Saving them up. Saving them up.
For budget season?
Wait, I was going to say, it's going to be a budget question.
12-wheeled.
Public Communications Coordinator report.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
The Administrator.
I just want to have one announcement. There is a local elected officials meeting next Wednesday. I did hear from three of, three of you, or four of you, rather. I did RSV for, RSV for those who said they wanted to go, and I've also posted the meeting, so. Because right now, there is going to, there's a possibility of a quorum. So, again, if you haven't talked to me, do that. Today is the day that we have to RSVP.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
We've already nailed down our summer office hours. So, the next thing is Joint City Council and Planning Commission meeting June 7th at 6:00, City Council Workshop, June 13th at 5:30, City Council meeting June 14th at 6:00, and the calendar of the meetings are on the back. So, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll second.
And Ron.
Aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.